All the meeting do order.
To the fine of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Heavenly Father, be with us this evening as we do the business of the city for the good and well for other people in Jesus' name, pray again.
Amen. So this would be item C, this will be approval agenda, so approval of the agenda for today, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve the agenda for today, February fourteenth.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. This is item D, citizens' comments, so this point, we would allow citizens to comment on anything that they choose, we would allow them three minutes, and each guest is welcome to comment, but they must state their first name, last name, and their address. I think everyone here is actually here for their agenda item, but.
Chair?
Yeah.
Great, everyone here is for an agenda item.
Okay.
Would you like to close this portion?
Make a motion to close the citizen's comments?
Very good. So it won't be a motion, it'll just be closing of citizens' comments, very good. This is item E, approval of the minutes, so this is approve the planning commission regular meeting minutes for January tenth, twenty twenty-two. A quick refresher, what we had for January tenth was the vote of the chair and the vice chair and the scooter cyclist, to this point.
I'll make a motion to approve the planning commission regular meeting minutes from January tenth.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Item F, so this is board of zoning appeals, so item F one, this is industrial district modification, so a quick background, during twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, the planning commission had discussed market changes that have occurred both recently in the past, and these market changes can occasionally run at odds with the zoning classifications that they abide within, so from time to time, zoning classification should be reviewed for amendments to allow for these market changes to benefit the city and capitalization on growth trends both locally and nationally, if the planning commission approves the changes to the I-one zoning classification, it will then be considered by the city council and become finalized thirty days after publication in the city newspaper. So the planning commission is reviewing the I-one industrial district zoning classification for modification, green was added on the following slides, if it was added text, red if it was removed, and black it stayed the same. So this is an introduction, so this is verbatim from the I-one, this district is designed for light industrial uses which do not require large amounts of land, generate modest amounts of traffic, are consistent with the capacity and availability of public private services, created limited environmental problems in the way of odor, smoke, dusk, glare, vibrational sounds that do not permit intermixing of residential uses, so I've added green onto that to say this district will additionally serve as a business incubator for transitional small businesses and will allow for co-mingle, load-omeedum, intensely land uses, so that would be the introduction of the I-one. Permitted uses, so permitted uses one through sixteen is not changing, we're just leaving it as is. Seventeen through twenty-four staying the same, I've added twenty-five through thirty, and thirty-one I put in purple with a question mark because I'm leading the way and I wanted to get feedback from the planning commission certainly if it felt like that was an acceptable use, but one thing we added was dog kennels, large recycling collection centers, that'd be section two dash one oh two, bulk storage, retail shops, offices and services, businesses such as repair and watches, jewelry, shoes, office machines, appliances, dressmaking, tailor shops, barber and beauty shops, locksmiths and the like, as well as personal services, just the physical fitness, caning salons, physical therapy, chiropractic, other personal services, boat and RV stores, and then stockyards and slaughterhouses, we leave as up in the air determining whether or not it would be acceptable or not. If you remember, Jennifer Walk spoke about the possibility of adopting certain types of land uses into the industrial district, that would be covered under twenty-nine. So use is not permitted, these generally stay the same except I put purple, stockyards and slaughterhouses, because once again, if it's not permitted, should it be permitted, or should it not be permitted, and that's kind of something that would be up to the planning commission if you feel like it's too much of a use, you know, maybe it should be permitted but with certain types of provisions, for example, we do have Struts which is on Main Street which is a slaughterhouse, if it were to relocate, technically couldn't relocate anywhere in the city because right now none of the zoning would allow for it, so should the industrial district be allowed to host something like a Struts, or should Struts be a different zoning classification entirely, that's something just to take into consideration, and we would receive feedback from the planning commission if you would choose to make one recommendation versus another on that. Special uses, so generally stay the same, recycling, I marked out here as section two dash one oh two as being not a special use but an acceptable use, section four, one oh six A, such other uses may also include retail and service businesses, so once again, I marked this out because that would be considered an acceptable use, not a special use. Lot size requirements, there's no change, bulk regulations, no change, use limitations, so no building shall be for residential purposes except as existing residences, left at the same, outdoor operations, display and storage is permitted which is related activity to principal use, except that only parking display areas for new products only are permitted in the minimum front yard setback, I marked that out because I was anticipating something like the First Fridays of Kansas City where they had repurposed the industrial district, I didn't know if really that made too much sense to say you're only allowed to display it but only if it's a new item and only for a certain amount of time, maybe that is a reasonable expectation because then it could spill out onto the parking lot, maybe that would not be considered acceptable, but I'm trying to consider malleability here in terms of the definition of the land use, so either way, I mean, whatever determination the planning commission would feel is acceptable will be taken into account, presented to city council for final consideration. There shall be no emission of dust, noise, odor, or vibration which shall be detectable as a nuisance beyond a lot line, I actually thought this was an impossible statement, so I marked it out, simply because I thought if a noise or odor or vibration were to be noticed outside of the lot line, how would that go and be a nuisance and how would it be mitigated, so, and if it was considered not acceptable blatantly at face value, I thought perhaps it should be just mitigated instead of saying outright it can't be acceptable, because that means you could stand at the lot line and lean over and listen to something and say that's a nuisance, and I thought that might have been an unreasonable expectation of a restriction on a land use, and so instead I said businesses that generate noise, dust, or odor that is noticeable beyond the lot line shall do everything reasonably possible to mitigate the noise, dust, or odor, and I thought that might have been a more acceptable definition of a restriction of a use. Financially, there's small publication costs per state law, anytime there's an amendment to subdivision regulations, we have to publish it, allowing twenty days to lapse, legally approved as the form, it is recommended that the planning commission approve the modifications to the I-one zoning classification and allowing staff to incorporate any additional changes or recommendations made by the planning commission during this regular meeting, and at this point, receive comments, questions, ideas, feedback on this one?
What you thought on the slaughterhouse?
It would be feasible to make stockyards a separate land from slaughterhouses, wouldn't it?
Stockyard, yes, you could make it separate, because you're storing, at a stockyard you're storing it, slaughterhouse you're actually going through the process of rendering and everything else, and so those could technically be two separate land uses, they typically run in tandem though, so I'm not sure.
And the reason I make that comment is based on where it might possibly be for Goddard.
Right, right.
I'm not sure a stockyard is something you want right in the middle of town, but I don't mind the slaughterhouse. I don't know, it's gonna be a very big stockyard, I don't know, it's gonna be a big deal, but I was just wondering if we separated those two would make more sense based on our current situation, I know that's not what you're trying to get, both, but.
No, whatever, I mean, whatever you would recommend, certainly, I know that there have been lots of examples of stockyards moving into a city and just generally demolishing the property value of the surrounding neighborhood simply because of the smell, and the odor, and the noise, and just, you know, everything that would go with a stockyard and a slaughterhouse, and so perhaps, and that's kind of why I put it in purple and asking for feedback, perhaps it should be a separate zoning classification entirely, a higher density industrial perhaps that requires a lot of land and a significant buffer between the city and that land use simply because of the impacts that it has, both residentially and commercially.
Which, you know, I mean, since we're talking about our little bit of industrial, right there by the Starbowl probably wouldn't be too popular.
Maybe not.
So anyway, that would be one thing I would suggest, other than that, I don't know that I have any.
Any other thoughts on I-one, modifications, changes, concerns, or comments?
I like what you've done, so, I agree with what the stockyard part.
Stockyard.
Slaughterhouse would be fine, but I think it'd drive it through liberal.
I've never driven through liberal, is it an interesting experience?
Yeah, it's an interesting smell.
Very good, okay.
You know when you're getting close.
Predominantly stockyards in that area, or both, co-mingle, predominantly stockyards?
Like National Beef is like right southeast part of town, so.
I like that it opens up tomorrow, retail space for development, you know, because we're pretty limited on the downtown area for as far as that goes, I mean, we've got the whole Kellogg Corporal.
Yeah.
Just give us people some options.
Very good.
Can I ask a question of Michael real quick? Michael, I know that the city's aware, they own that lot, they'll be sold them, if they expand it on, would they have to get a?
No, no, that's a, it's technically the opera, the so, Struts, and we sold the land right next to Struts, and so basically, it is considered a grandfathered use, but that lot that we sold to them is actually considered not a slaughter, it's actually rendering at that point, it's changed a different type of land use entirely, so.
But they would be fine if they wanted to expand on?
They are fine to expand on, and what's being presented, and I've been working with the architect and their additional staff that they've been using to try to make sure they have all the correct cold storage and everything else, and they're fine with what they're proposing, so, there's not gonna be any more, there won't be any slaughtering on that lot.
Right.
It would just be at that point, continuing the rendering process.
Motion?
Oops, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the modifications to the I-one zoning classification, allowing staff to incorporate any additional changes or recommendations made by the planning commission. Just to let you know, we've got the suggestion.
No, I don't have any issues. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. This is item F two, this is a sign variance request for scooters, V A R dash twenty-two dash one, so quick background, Omaha Neon Sign Co. has submitted a sign variance for application on behalf of Scooter's Coffee for additional wall signs, the city of Goddard subdivision divisions allows one wall sign for each abutting street footage, Scooter's Coffee drive-throughs abutting two streets and allowing for only two wall signs, one on each face of the building, Omaha Neon Co. is requesting two additional wall signs for wall faces that are not abutting the street, this will put one wall sign at each building face, the planning commission approved the site plan for scooters on January tenth, twenty twenty-two contingent upon review, the sign variance request, variance required publication twenty-eighths to lapse prior to review of the proposal, notices are sent out to every property owner within two hundred feet, K dot reached out and asked if the sign would be located in the K dot right away, which it is not, and they were informed it would not be, and no other property owners have reached out. So quick analysis, this is article ten dash one oh seven point C, variances from the provision of these regulations shall be granted by the board only in accordance with standards set out in section ten dash one oh seven point D, may be granted only in following instances and in no others, to vary the applicable minimum lot area, lot width, and lot depth, to vary applicable bulk regulations including maximum height, lot coverage, and minimum yard requirements, vary dimensional provisions for permitted obstructions required yards including fences in section three dash one oh three F, too fast, excuse me, four, to vary applicable number of required off-street parking spaces and amount of off-street loading requirements of article five, five, which is in orange because this is what applies, to vary the applicable dimension sign provision in section seven dash one oh two regarding general standards and section dash one oh four regarding district regulations. So we are considering a variance that's in line with five, so we'll go into the board may grant a variance upon specific writings and findings of fact based upon particular evidence presented to at the hearing and all conditions required by KSA Act twelve dash seven fifty-nine E, so I'll read through them, purple is my answer to what the requirements are, and feel free to ask any questions, we do have members of the scooters team here, so if there's are any additional questions, they will be happy to answer them. That variance request arises from such condition which is unique to the property in question which is not ordinarily found the same zoning district and is not created by an action or actions of the property owner or the applicant, so they haven't created it, the signs don't exist now, they're asking if they could put the signs up, so there's no variance request that's because they have already, you know, gone and done it already and asking for forgiveness, this is not the case, it's not created by the property owners, it is unique to property because the business is accessible on all sides, and what's unique about this business is that, one, it's scooters, you can drive all the way around it, and that's something that's unique in this particular business, and so what they're asking for, it's not considered unduly unreasonable in that they're gonna have people driving all the way around the business and that it'll be viewable from fifty-four, from those driving on fifty-four heading eastbound and westbound for that matter, but, most businesses typically have a parking lot with just one or two sides facing the public, people park and then they walk into the business, the business is right there for front door, this one's unique because you're gonna be driving all the way around it. That granting the variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents, it will not adversely affect other property owners as most of them are commercial, and the ones to the south are multifamily screened by a tree row, so to the south is those quadplexes, and they're putting in additional duplexes, about five more, and it's screened by a tree row, and so that's, and everything else surrounding it's gonna be, is commercial currently. That strict application provision of this regulation from which a variance is requested will continue, will constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owners represented in the application, so it is common practice for scooters to have multiple wall signs to advertise from different angles of visibility, and not allowing for this reduces marketing, potential, and that commercial business. That the variance desire will not adversely affect public health safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare, and that the granting of variance desire not opposed to general spirit and ten of these regulations, it will not affect health safety, welfare, and it is for the purpose of competition, helping Goddard grow. So those are my answers to the seven requirements of KSA, here is what they are proposing, you've seen this in the agenda packet, it's also in the one included, but they have, when you drive around it, you're gonna be seeing a scooters, a scooters, and then the logo here and the logo here, so that's what they're asking for, only, I believe, you know, I have, I should have put the directions on here, but the east and the north are but a street, the south and the west do not, so they're asking for a south and a west wall sign. Small publication costs per state law, legally approved as the form, it is recommended that the planning commission approve the sign variance request of scooters for additional wall signs, at this point, if you do have any questions, like I said, scooters is here to represent themselves, if you have any questions?
How big are the signs actually that we're adding?
Yeah.
You can come on up.
Do you mind name, address?
You can, yeah, I'll begin.
Dave Vavak, V A V A K, and one four, five one five, West one hundred and first Terrace, Lenexa, Kansas, six six two one five. So the circular signs are five foot eight wide and five foot tall, so twenty-five square feet roughly, twenty-eight point five five, if you measure them squarely, and then the other signs are fourteen feet wide, and I believe those run five feet as well up and down.
I don't think they look bad or anything, you know, with their appropriate size.
Are they all illuminated?
Yes, they're all illuminated, individual channel headers, so just the Scooter's Coffee drive-through light up, and then the whole circle will light up on those two, I guess.
Other questions? I don't have a problem with it, I think more than anything we're trying to keep from happening, but it's up the liquor store in the west end of town.
Nothing's flashing or?
Yeah, there's no flash or anything like that, yeah, no, it's tough when you're driving down that street, there's some that have more than two or more than, so, yeah, I don't know. But yeah, it looks, I mean, I think it looks, it looks great, this is their general way they do these at every location, and then you're right, it just comes down to city rules and regulations, but yeah, when you have all four, it does look nice, and it's, it does well for them, so.
I don't have any issues.
Thank you.
Motion?
I'll make a motion, that leaves room assigned variance, request for scooters for additional wall signs.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much, gentlemen, and ma'am, if you're welcome, you can stay for the rest of the night, or have a good evening.
Thank you.
This is item F three, this is a zoning text amendment for R two. So on March eleventh, twenty nineteen, the planning commission approved admitting to R two zoning classification allow for smaller lot sizes and reduce bulk regulations, on March eighteenth, twenty nineteen, the city council approved these changes, continuing review of the subdivision regulations has shown that R two allows for single-family detached housing to have a six-foot side yard setback while single-family attached and duplexes must have a ten-foot side yard setback, this requirement impedes a potential design layout for duplexes and twin homes in Goddard, disproportionately limits two-family developments over single-family, the rise of regulations allow for any acceptable principal use to have the same side yard setbacks and same lot requirements, also modifies the lot width and other necessary bulk regulations, if the planning commission approves the changes to the R two zoning classification, will then be considered by city council, become finalized thirty days after publication in the city newspaper. So this is gonna be similar to the I-one, where we'll go through, it'll be green if it was added, red if it was removed, black if it stays the same, so the planning commission is reviewing the R two industrial, excuse me, you can tell I did one else tired, R two multifamily zoning classification for modification, so, introduction, so this district is established to permit medium density two-family dwelling units with both public sewer and water supply and allows certain community facilities, is not intended generally for single-family residential use except as incidental to the area, I will mark that, it is not intended generally for single-family residential use except as incidental to the area, it seems that the bulk regulations when they were written disproportionately favored single-family, even though the R two zoning classification was supposed to be for duplexes, so, I'm not really sure what the intent was of the writer when they wrote the R two originally, perhaps they felt that duplexes needed additional setbacks on the sides, I'm not really sure why, typical setbacks are used for lot creation, and then, as I said, access to easements, but if six foot is considered acceptable for a single family, between one single family and another single family, six and six being twelve, it seems perfectly reasonable to expect that duplex, six and six equaling twelve would be just as acceptable to access easements and have the side yards as required by a principal for a single family, so, that's kind of the underpinning of it, it says any permitted use is allowed in R one A and R one B residential districts except residential design manufactured homes, so I marked this out because this was, basically permitted uses didn't have, had this portion that was in red, and this portion in black, and then the green, I added all this, but it is referencing R one A and R one B, and instead of having to go to an R two zoning classification, only to jump back to an R one A and R one B, I figured I'd just list it out, so that way, if you're looking for an R two, you can find all the acceptable uses instead of having to go back to another chapter to find. of having to go back to another chapter to find what those acceptable uses are. So, instead, I just laid it all out there. Single-family attached, maxing to two-family dwellings, that's stayed the same. I had all the green, which was in the R1A and R1B. That way, it's just all laid out in that chapter for R2. Special uses, so this one is kind of unique. Any special uses allowed in R1A and R1B residential districts. Instead of putting it as a special use, I put it as a conditional use. So, any use not specifically permitted which does not conflict with 102F. 102F is basically use limitations. So, instead of saying it's a special use, I'm basically saying everything is a conditional use. What that does is that anything that would typically be considered a special use in an R2 is now a conditional use, which means that it still has to be published, we still have to send out the letters, but instead of it having to go to the planning commission and city council, it just goes to planning commission. So, what that does is it reduces the amount of entitlement time that you would have to go through for a special use in an R2 district. That's just something I thought was unique, and some cities have gone away with special uses entirely. The restrictions that are put on it by the state of Kansas, for example, would have extra provisions for conditional uses and special uses. So, for example, our subdivision regulations treat a special use like a rezoning. And so, I was thinking that if it's a use limitation, it probably should be as a conditional use, which goes before planning commission, as opposed to going through planning commission and city council. But, if you feel like that's too much, of course, feel free to comment and say you prefer to go one way or another, whatever you choose. Lot size requirements, so this is where we kind of got into the lot size requirements. So, minimum lot required, dwellings permitted by Section 4-102A1. Had it at 6,000 square feet. Single-family attached and two-family was that 3,500 square feet. All of the principal uses was 8,000, in which I switched to 5,000. Minimum lot width, they had it at 60. Single-family was 35. All of the principal uses, I switched it to 50 over here, and minimum lot depth is being 100. So, what they were saying is basically you can have 3,500 square feet and then 5,000 square feet, but then if it was a duplex, it had to be 8,000 with 60 or 80. And so, 60 was actually being, single-family, excuse me, was 60, and then everything else had to be 80. And so, what I was just making is uniformity here. If it's single-family attached and two-family could be 3,500, all of the principal uses could be 5,000, which would be single-family or detached. I felt that brought more uniformity to it. And then, similar here, this is where it caught in. It said minimum side yards could be six feet. I marked it up to six feet. Dwelling is permitted by Section 4-102A, which is just single-family houses, is six feet. Single-family attached and two-family dwellings had to be 10 feet, except for the common lot line of attached dwelling, because of course it's right down the center. All of the principal uses had to be 10 feet. Minimum rear yard 20, that doesn't change, and maximum lot coverage 40. So, this is saying that instead of having to go through all this, we just say if it's an acceptable use in an R2, it can have a six-foot side yard setback. Rear yard stays the same, maximum lock coverage stays the same. Same with this. 5,000 square feet, 3,500 on the single-family attached and multi, and twin homes. All of the principal uses are 50 on that one. So, it just has uniformity if it's a single-family or if it's a duplex or it's a twin home, which are basically the only uses that are allowed in R2. They all get the same side yard setbacks. They all got the same lot width, and they all get the same lot depths. Let me go back, actually. Height stays the same. This, basically, if you have a corner lot, nothing changes there. So, use limitations, no outdoor storage shall be permitted, that stayed the same. I marked no residential design manufactured homes and no commercial or industrial uses. So, we're trying to make that as a clear delineation that you're not going to have a warehouse in an R2 or something along those lines, and that a commercial use is, you can't have, you know, a commercial use. And no residential design manufactured homes. So, these, I've only really seen one, and it didn't look very appealing. Now, that's a personal opinion. If you've seen design manufactured homes that you thought were really appealing, perhaps that could be modified to have certain provisions in there. Typically, the subdivision regulations say that if it's allowed, it has to somewhat meet the local urban fabric for that area, which allows you to say, well, if it's radically outlandish in terms of its design, it needs to be modified to at least represent some of the other houses in the area. That being said, it's so malleable in that sense, I thought perhaps it'd be better just to simply say, we're not going to allow that, but perhaps that, you know, is something that could be amended in such a way to make it allow for, yes.
Well, if somebody does want to do it, then they would come in and present it to us.
Right now, I marked it as no, so.
Or no is no.
No means no, yeah, in that particular sense. But, if you wanted to, we could put it as a conditional use, perhaps. We could put that any use not specifically permitted which does not con, so this right now is saying it conflicts with 102F. This would be 102F for use limitations. Wanted to put that in there?
I got you.
Yeah, if you wanted to say, I guess we would just strike it from here. If you wanted to allow it, we could say, we just get rid of that, and that way, we, it would be a conditional use.
Oh, no, it was just, whatever you think, just an option.
I just, maybe it's just personal preference, I suppose.
Sure.
Question, I know there's a lot of, lot of new different ways of building, you know, residences and stuff. We got somebody building barn dominium, you know, on the county, and would these type of, those type structures fit in this?
So, I mean, a barn dominium typically would not, I wouldn't consider it as being acceptable. So, are you talking about the barn dominium off of 23rd?
Yeah.
That's in the, that's in the county?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so, the reason that one's in the county, I think, I mean, it's not like he went to the county because I said, you know, we wouldn't allow that. Technically, we'd still do allow them in certain areas, and R1, for example, it does allow it. It's got provisions in there that you can't have a residentially designed manufactured home with a metal roof, and that it has to have certain aesthetic appeal, certain architectural similarities to the urban fabric around it. This would say, no, you can't have it in an R2 district. But, at some point, if we wanted to amend it where R1 wouldn't allow it either, then, yeah, at some point, we're kind of pushing these away out to the county. It's kind of like you're going to push these residential manufactured houses out to the county simply because of the look and feel of them, but if you feel perhaps people should allow barn dominiums, generally, I've sort of frowned upon it when people want to present barn dominiums and said, we want to have more of a traditional, single-family detached house. You know, if you want a metal roof, you're going to have to go for a single-family detached traditional house anyway, per subdivision regulations. But, if you felt that that was too restrictive, similar to what we did with the commercial lots of how allowing them to have better frontage or stuff like that, that could be considered. It's just somewhat a little bit more difficult to manage.
Yeah.
Architectural styles of barn dominiums.
I was curious, do you know where that fell in?
A barn dominium, yeah, is in the county. It's, it's sometimes hard to gauge what is considered pretty to people, because generally I look at it as being not acceptable in a residential development. However, if you felt that was too restrictive, given the certain economic environment, maybe we could just have it as a conditional use, if you felt that'd be more common.
Most covenants in these neighborhoods aren't going to allow you to do it anyways, period.
It's true.
Yeah, so, our current makeup is allowing it.
We can't even put a metal roof on.
Yeah. So, only, only places that would really allow it is any place that doesn't have an HOA, which would be basically, everything north of 23rd and west of Goddard Road and south of 54, that area is the only place that really doesn't have an HOA. So, they would probably allow it.
Is that inside the city?
Yeah, it's in the city. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, those, any place that doesn't have an HOA would fall under our subdivision regulations, which would say you can't have a metal roof, but you could have a residential design manufactured home if it had a certain, architectural appeal that matched the surrounding area. So, couldn't it just look like a barn dominium? It had to look like, it would have to look nicer. And there's some that are out there that do look like a traditional house. They're just a little bit more high-dollar, so.
So, if someone is determined to make that happen, if we were to make this change, what, do they have options? I mean, can they do?
The only options.
A conditional use, or do they have to just apply that?
The way, the way R2 is written right now, they couldn't.
They have to have it rezoned.
Yeah, you'd have to have an R1. You can only build it in R1.
But, we're only talking R2.
We're only talking R2.
Correct.
Just because I ran into this in other towns. The lot coverage percentage?
Yes.
Forty percent?
Mm-hmm.
That's actually roof area coverage.
Yeah, right.
So, I don't know if you, if there's anywhere to, if you even care to clarify it now rather than you have to clarify it later over and over.
It's clarified in Article 2.
Okay.
Article 2 does say it just covers roof coverage. It doesn't include driveways or back porches unless the back porch has a covering. It doesn't include impervious surface, so if you paved your whole backyard, technically it doesn't include that. It just says roof coverage, which is.
Yeah.
Yeah, just roof. And that's in Article 2, general provisions, which outline what lot coverage is, it's defined that way.
Yeah.
I know, I've, I talked to one of my colleagues in New York, and he said he had to get a survey that included his paving stones on his walkway to his garden, so, yeah, it was a bit rigorous. It had, every impervious surface had to be calculated as impervious for the total lot coverage. So, I mean, some cities move in that direction pretty stringently because all that stormwater runoff impacts the stormwater plant, the sewer treatment plant, and so they felt like you have to pay more if you are setting more into the drain. That was kind of the reason behind it.
So, with that, is there any issue? Or what outbuilding and stuff like that, does that count in that 40%?
Yeah, if it's got a roof. Mm-hmm, if it's got a roof. So, like a detached garage or, or a shed or something like that, if it's got a roof on it. And usually, you'll see that on the property records card in the county, and when they submit a building permit or something along those lines, you'll see it actually reflected on that property records card, and you can use that for a total calculation.
Any more discretion, or do we have a motion?
Any thoughts on residential manufactured homes? Is it too discriminatory?
I know there are some around Goddard Old Town, Town area, that make it look, you know, like the, some of the neighborhood, the houses around it.
Right.
I think if you could, if, if it can look like it fits in the space, you know, in the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
I don't necessarily have a problem.
Do you think it should be an R2, oh, excuse me, a conditional use instead of a use limitation?
That would open it up for you to bring in.
Yeah, at least we can see it and we can talk about it.
Sure, absolutely. So, we'll switch it from, instead of it being not acceptable for no residential, we'll put it under conditional use, so we'll, this will stay the same, but then we'll mark it as I, we'll take it off from that and switch it over to conditional use, if you're okay with that. Okay?
Yeah.
Very good. Small publication cost per state law, approved as to form. Recommended the planning commission approve the modifications to R2 zoning classification allowing staff to incorporate any additional changes. All recommendations made by the planning commission during this regular meeting.
Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve modifications, R2 zoning class, allowing staff to incorporate any additional changes or recommendations made during this meeting. Or, or.
All seconded up?
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much. So, this is item F4, a lot split for Cloverleaf, SPLT-22-1. So, Abbott Land Surveyors has submitted a lot split request for several parcels in the Cloverleaf Farm subdivision. This request comes at the behest of the city to fall in line with the subdivision regulation requirements for changing a duplex into a twin home. Duplexes are considered a single ownership with both sides being rented. Twin homes are one building with both sides owned by separate owners, and they have a common lot line. So, the planning commission is considering approving a lot split for Cloverleaf Farms. This is Article 2-102. This defines what a dwelling detached is and what it looks like. So, a residential building which is joined to another dwelling at one side or more sides by a party wall or walls, including a wall of an attached garage. Separate ownership of a twatch, attached dwelling, excuse me, units, known as common lot line housing or twin homes in quotes, shall be accompanied by a reported lot split unless already platted into individual lots. So, Cloverleaf, as you know, is R2, and they were putting in some duplexes on Martin's Court, and they wanted to put some duplexes on the east portion of Cloverleaf. And then, they said, well, what about a twin home or a patio home, which means that one side's owned by one person, one side's owned by another. I said, that would be considered an acceptable land use. However, if you were to do that, if one person owns one side, one person owns the other side, there has to be a clear delineation for tax purposes, one parcel number here, one parcel number here, and a lot split that has to accommodate that. And so, we're actually forcing them to come into compliance, so when I, it's a little tongue-in-cheek to say that they're requesting it, because they're requesting it because I'm telling them, then they have to do it. So, it's kind of a little bit different than a general request. This is obviously, makes it a lot easier for property ownership. If somebody owns half of it and they want to sell half, and it's on one lot, then it's got a separate tax ID for tax purposes and ownership records. So, these are in our subdivision regulations, so no lot split shall be approved if a new street or alley is needed or proposed. There's no street or alley proposed. A vacation or streets, alleys, setback lines, access controls or easements is required or proposed. No vacation is proposed. Such action results in significant increases in service requirements, utilities, school, traffic control, streets, et cetera, or, maintaining existing service levels, additional curb cuts to repaving, et cetera. Technically, services were anticipated for this development to include the units proposed. So, it was already anticipated. We paved everything, we anticipated what kind of services would be needed. They have their own individual meters. It was assumed that they would be duplexes, just the conversion from a duplex to a twin home requires a lot split. So, no, it doesn't automatically increase the number of units, it just says that the ownership changes. There is less, there is less street right-of-way required by these regulations, although comprehensive plan unless such dedication can be made by separate instrument, street right-of-way will not be modified, there's no modifications to the Cloverleaf development. All easement requirements have not been satisfied, none of them will be encroaching on easement, all of them are meeting our requirements for easements. Such split will result in a track without direct access to a street, that's pretty straightforward if you have a lot and it's facing a street and you were to cut it, you know, horizontally, all of a sudden, north, you know, the back portion can't access the street, that's an inoperable lot. So, this is not that case. Substandard sized lot or parcel will be created, so all lots are meeting the minimum standards required for R2, and this is even before the modification, just to clarify, that was just approved, that, it met the minimum standards before this R2 was, was amended. So, they were already in line with that. Such action will result in lots with being, split into two, more than two tracks, except for industrial zone planted lots, which may be split into two or more tracks. So, they're just splitting it down the middle, each lot, it's just from one to two. So, this is where it's located, this is Cloverleaf, this is the east side, these six lots over here, and I included one of them. All of them are included in your agenda packet, but I threw one up there so you can kind of see what it looks like. This is the common lot line. If you, if you can imagine this being gone and this being a duplex, as soon as they split it down the middle, you have an owner on this side and an owner on this side. Financially none, so lot splits have to be approved by planning commission, but there's no publication as approved to form, and as I mentioned, no publication requirements per the city attorney, that was something that came up. Do lot splits have to be published or not? I couldn't find anything in the state law, and he said, no, so we can just consider it. Every planning commission. It is recommended the planning commission approve the lot splits request for the following par, lots, parcel G, parcel E, parcel D, parcel F, parcel C, parcel B, subdivision, and we do have Chad Abbott here, if you do have any questions about the lot splits. At this point, I'll open it up to questions, comments, concerns.
Do we limit, when we approve this as for R2, on, they've built duplexes on the west end of this block, is this development there?
The duplexes, there is some on the east, so they built, the ones that you just saw, those six right over here, they've started building these ones already, and some of them are already built. The ones on the west side, Martin's Court is over here, those are not being split, they're staying duplexes. If they were to turn them into twin homes, being a duplex of a twin home is like two sides of a frying pan, you know, you flip it over, all of a sudden, it's a twin home, you know, it's just one side's the bottom, one side's the top of the frying pan, and so if they were to decide, hey, we want to turn these all into twin homes, all of them would have to go through a lot split, that would have to come before planning commission, and they would have to follow all those requirements that you just saw. No, you can, no abnormal lots, no, you know, access to streets, that type of thing, so right now, those are all staying duplexes, these are the ones that are turning into twin homes. And they will probably, from what I understand, talking to the developer, those twin homes will probably extend up this way, when the next third phase is going in, so. The desirability of twin home versus a duplex, I couldn't really say in the real estate market, but they're a hot ticket item, so.
Anybody have a comment on that?
A motion to approve lot splits, requested for the following lots, parcel G, E, D, F, C, and B, in the Cloverleaf Farms subdivision.
Was there any reason on E that that's so forced to be less?
Is E up there, is it on your application, is it on the agenda?
It's in the packet. It's the one on the bend. Isn't that the one you're looking at yesterday?
Yeah, just, just curious.
Well, I don't know, I mean, in particular, just probably trying to get it in there. I know that these particular duplexes that they're converting to twin homes, they tried to have different design layout, so what they did is that instead of, a typical duplex, what you'd expect, you drive up and there's two garages and two front doors right in front of you. In this particular case, what they've done is a different design approach, where you have a garage and a door in front of you, and then a door and the garage is on the side. So the reason they pushed some of them to the side so dramatically is so that they can have a larger approach in a driveway on one side of it, where you would actually drive in the side of the duplex as opposed to right in front.
Side of the garage.
Thank you.
They were also trying to navigate around some of the utilities that were in place when the street was constructed, so that kind of forced a little bit of that.
Okay. Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much. Chad, if you want to stay for the rest of the evening, or not.
Head on home, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Item G, there was none. Item H, new business, so this is item H1, this is a Trails End Development preliminary plat. So quick background, Garver LLC has submitted preliminary plat on behalf of the developer, Brian Legault and Kirk Richards, for the development Trails End. This development is located east of 215th and north of 23rd. The city council annexed this development on December 20th, 2021, bringing it into the corporate limits of the city of Goddard. City council agreed to the rezoning for the development if it was accompanied by restrictive covenant, limiting the number of duplexes to 79, or 40%, whichever is less for the development, which has been submitted by Garver for review by the city attorney. Garver has drafted a stormwater engineering requirements for review by the city engineer. The final plat will be considered in March by planning commission, and the proposed plat incorporates a wall easement on the south and west, which in addition to enclosing development from view, will help slow the rate of runoff for the development minorly. So I talked with the city engineer, we noticed, if you will see on your app, on the plat, that there's actually a five foot wall easement, so I was talking to him, to our engineer, and I said, well, typically, if you have a parking lot, there's curb and gutter, that curb and gutter actually acts as a form of retention in and of itself, and he said, that's correct. In this particular case, of course, if you have a retention wall, they do put little cutouts at the bottom, so the water can flow out, but the fact that all the water would be channeled to those cutouts actually helps slows the flow of water. Now, that's obviously not, cannot be used in lieu of retention ponds, they are proposing three retention ponds for this development to meet with the engineering requirements set by the city. The planning commission is considering approving a preliminary plat for the Trails End Development. Plat is for 199 residential lots, 79 duplexes, 120 single family detached houses, gross acres are 92.53, about 4 million square feet, proposed zoning R2, currently annexed, restrictive covenants received and is approved by the city attorney, restrictive covenants limits to duplexes in development to 79, engineering for stormwater is underway. So this is the Trails End, I went ahead and kind of marked some little blue areas where you're going to see some retention. They're obviously over detaining quite a bit, there's the concerns from certain citizens in the county about stormwater, this will help mitigate that and actually help control the flow of stormwater, even more so than what was previously there, so we're pretty excited about that, because that should actually help those to the south. There is that wall easement, you'll see it actually on the west side, on the south side. I had it cut in half, obviously I can't fit the whole thing, and it's more a north-south development than an east-west, so I had to split it for this PowerPoint presentation, but you get your curvy linear streets, some cul-de-sacs. If you look at the plat, there's a small two with a circle around it representative of lots that are going to have the duplexes on them. I think right now, they've marked about 73.
Correct.
But they're proposing, you know, another six, which would be the 79, if they wanted to find six more somewhere.
And these are all dry, there's no water?
Waterbed's pretty low in that area. We actually did some water, you talk about the...
No, no, I, these aren't meant to hold any water.
What, they'll be wet ponds, they'll be wet, surface on them, yes.
Okay.
Good, yeah, very good question.
Sorry.
Financially none, legally approved as the form. It is recommended the planning commission approve the preliminary plat for the Trails End Development. Chris Baum of Garver is here, Representative Brian Legault and Kirk Richards, and just want to have you step on up. If you guys have any questions, feel free to ask.
I just wanted to point out, can you run it back to the split plat picture?
Yeah.
I was talking to, yeah, perfect, perfect. I was talking to Brian here right before the meeting. Again, Chris Baum with Garver, 1995, Midfield Road, Wichita, Kansas, 67209, I have the zip code down now. On the right, do you see the long path and then the lot line to the north?
If you want, you can use the pointer.
Oh, perfect.
Okay, line at the top.
Okay, cool. So right here at these lots and right up here, all of this is Phase One. They're planning on doing 104 lots in Phase One, is what it sounds like today. So you may recall during the zoning, and we've had discussions with city council on a lift station that goes here, that forced means the sewage back up to the north, towards Kellogg. And then the, during the zone change application, we showed a conceptual plat layout, we had 202 lots in that, due to the lot width requirements, we're at 199, so a maximum of 79 duplex lots, which was mentioned. The little twos on the lots, you can see them, it's basically this area here, and then this area down here, we honored the single family buffer around the perimeter, so no single family, or no duplexes on the perimeter near adjacent homes. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Mike has said they'll, they'd like to exercise if they need the option to add six duplexes to go up to the 79 total, but that's it, we can't have more than 79. And I'll stand for any questions.
There's the water running out of reserve C, what does that look like as it crosses under the road?
There are two culvert pipes under the road that go south.
Okay.
So that pond will be a two-part pond, the biggest part of the pond obviously would be in the larger reserve, and then there'll be under two, probably two underground RCP pipes that cross-connect the new pond here in the south end of that reserve.
But does that connect, do you do a waterway then south of the...
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So that will cross-connect here, water comes through and heads to the south. And then on this pond, it collects roughly this drainage basin, and it goes under the road on 215th, right, you know, right there, right at that low contour. Both of them will over detain the developed runoff to less than the existing condition runoff, from a different set of storm, 2510, 25, 5000 here storms.
Two phases, the first one's 104 lots?
Yeah, that's the plan right now, yes.
That's a big phase.
Yep, yes.
Is the pool with all that included?
Correct, the pool and everything will be right here in the northerly part of that bigger reserve, right here. There'll be parking, a little parking lot that comes in, it didn't quite all make it on.
We're going to do off-street.
Off-street parking.
Yeah, I mean, instead of parking lot, we're going to do just...
Off-street, interior to the site, okay, so the reserve will have a, the little recreation center, pool, parking lot, landscaped.
The five-foot wall's going to be on the lot lines?
Yes.
The, the five-foot?
Yeah.
Okay. You have a free pitch across the backyard. Might be more for Mike it.
Yeah.
So that water to the south is going to go towards that, to the south, is that, was that where they were talking about the road being an issue?
Yeah, so, if I may jump in real fast, yeah. So, yeah, 23rd is right here and 215 is over on the side, so there was a lot of obviously comments in December, some of the concerns that were brought up was traffic. 215, in comparison, I've driven on 23rd and 215, I haven't seen that level of congestion that was being displayed during the December meeting. I went ahead and drove on 215 and 23rd and just kind of did some laps around the area just to kind of see, at different times of the day, just to kind of figure out, is there any peak? The only real concern that really did seem to manifest itself was north at 54 and 215 when we had that snow, we had a couple of commercial trucks slide off into the ditch over by the Dylan's Warehouse, but obviously that's kind of north of this development, and you, I can't, no developer can stop the snow from happening, so. That being said, I did speak with Garver and I asked for 50 feet on the right-of-way from the center line on 23rd and 60 feet from the center line on 215, just in case that when we do determine that traffic mitigation is necessary for engineering purposes, we have enough right-of-way to add additional lanes returning, or anything else that might be deemed necessary per the transportation engineering standards to mitigate traffic in those areas, so we do have plenty of right-of-way to add additional traffic mitigating factors to the roads, and we will be annexing those roads as part of it. Whether or not we annex 100% of the roads, or half, is, has to be determined by city council.
Okay.
Yeah, by default, we, yeah, by default, we annex half, city council is in consideration if we want to annex the whole road, which doesn't really take into account the developers at this point, because road transportation's the city, so.
I didn't know if that additional water was going to, I didn't know what was causing the pothole that we heard about, so I was just curious.
Typically, potholes are caused, you know, by, by any number of factors, one of them being, of course, that it snows and then you drop, you know, salt on the road, it melts into the cracks, and then it freezes and it breaks apart the asphalt. I'm not a transportation engineer, nor do I work for Public Works, so I don't want to leave my lane, so to speak.
Where the water went across underneath it was a constant problem, till they finally fixed the culvert, that's why I was curious.
Oh, sure, sure, well, any, yes. If there's a culvert that's in the right-of-way, once the city annexes it, it becomes our culvert, and so we would go through that process. If there is a pothole and we annex the road, it becomes our pothole, so. Any type of transportation or engineering standards that need to be applied, once we annex the land and the roads abutting them, then we take care of it, so.
Just out of curiosity, do you have a start date for what you want to build, when you want to build your first house?
Soon as he gets them going.
My instructions are...
As soon as the streets are done, we're starting.
As fast as we can get it put into the ground.
As soon as the streets are done, we'll be starting.
Springs, spring streets at this point, I mean, it'll be...
Weather permitting, of course, we have to...
A year from now, when the paving's done. I mean, there's a lift station to build, a lot of infrastructure, as you can see, so I would guess April, May, building permits pulled, you know, as fast as we can go, and depends on next winter, what it, how well everything can proceed, so, as quickly as we can.
Quite honestly, at this point, the slowest portion will probably be me, simply because we don't allow home builders and street paving contractors in the same space at the same time. We've run into issues where you will have an excavator running into a paving, you know, equipment, and it just causes too many issues, and so we've started to limit when home builders and street pavers are working side by side, we just can't have that. So, once the roads are in and everything else, you know, when the bidding's done and the pre-development and the pre-construction meetings are done, and the pavers are out of there, whether it's No Walk or Pearson or whoever's doing the paving, then at that point, it's opened the floodgates for the home builders, so.
Sound like Barbara Creek?
At this point, we're looking for a motion.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the preliminary plat for the Trails End Development. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, feel free to reach out, and have a good evening.
Okay, see you in a month or so.
Thank you.
This is the staff report. So I1 of the staff report, this is just development status, Rustic Creek will begin submitting building permits soon, as Pearson Construction has finished installing the roads for Phase One, and so that was, as mentioned, we, we separate the home builders and the subcontractors for paving, it causes too many issues to have, because you'll have a home builder trying to get their excavator in there and they're running over curbs and gutters, and, you know, going over graded lots and everything else, and so it causes too much consternation for all, everyone involved, city subcontractors and home builders, and so we say the home builders have to wait until whoever's paving is out of there. In this particular case, so it's Pearson for Rustic Creek, Pearson has left, Russell Ralph reached out as a developer for Rustic Creek, and we've submitted the building permit applications to him, so we will start seeing them coming in soon, which is exciting for that. The Starbarn Development, so Phase Two softball diamonds are underway, you can see them off of Goddard Road, if you're driving along 199th Goddard Road, you'll see the second phase of the Starbarn Diamonds are underway, and they're softball. And I did speak to the general manager, and they have stated before publicly that it could be July where the hotel would be open, so we're hoping to see that come to fruition, and obviously more exciting venues for Goddard and those in the surrounding area. Cloverleaf, so Cloverleaf Farms has more than half its Phase Two lots sold, and engineering is underway for reviewing Phase Three. There are only Phase, three phases in Cloverleaf, and they are flying at an exceptional rate, and they're filling up quite fast, so we're excited to both see that happen, and we are speaking with the developer about future developments, seeing what can be available. I2, so this is rezoning the city purchased land, so Garver LLC has submitted a rezoning request for land under contract to be purchased from the city, the city-owned land at 23rd and 199th, which is Goddard Road, is under contract with Mr. Bob Armstrong, to be bought from the city. This land has a due diligence provision on it to allow Mr. Armstrong to go through the rezoning process before the land purchased is closed. The rezoning will come before the planning commission on March 14th, 2022, and I did speak with Garver, and they are on, on their way right now to get the preliminary plat as well on the March 14th docket, so we should see the planning commission reviewing the preliminary plat as well as the rezoning for that land.
Which corner is this?
That's 23rd and 199th.
Which way is corner?
It's, if, right at the junction of the, yeah, it's the north, northwest corner, yeah.
RVL Creek, I'm sorry.
There's an old Baptist church that used to, that used to be in use, it's not in use anymore, that was bought by Mr. Pio Hernandez, and then consequently sold to Mr. Bob, Barb Armstrong, and went to rezoning on that portion by this, by planning commission and city council. Bob Armstrong has asked for additional land and thought perhaps he could buy land from the city of Goddard, and the city council decided that it was advantageous to sell the land to Mr. Bob Armstrong. There were certain restrictive covenants that were on that land that prohibited any type of development from happening, and so we are working with the previous landowners who happens to be the Heart of Kansas Southern Baptist Association to release those covenants, and they've agreed to release the covenants with certain provisions. And so Mr. Armstrong is working with Garver, Garver is going to be the engineering firm for him, and we should see both, and I can't say how many duplexes right now, because I haven't actually seen it, it's just going to be a certain number that's actually allowed. I will say that there is a large gas pipeline, pressurized gas pipeline that runs from east and west across that lot, so they have to be outside of that by, I think about 55 feet, so it's a pretty significant easement that they have to be out of. You can pave across it, but you can't put a house on top of that easement, so. That's it for the staff report, at this point, allow planning commissioner comments.
Comment?
Are we going to have a new member next month?
So I met with the mayor and had lunch with Mr. Ryan Walker, and it went very favorably, so we're hoping to, if city council takes into account the mayor's recommendation for planning commission and city council ratifies it, then we could potentially see Mr. Walker on in April. That would be when it's, when he would join the planning commission.
Good thing we squeaked this one by.
Yes.
Is, is Ms. Jody going to avail, does her name, has that been confirmed?
So we're looking through that internally right now, whether or not she can remain or not, and city council did amend the planning commission bylaws.
Is, is Ms. Jody going to avail? Is it her name? Has that been confirmed?
So we're working through that internally right now, whether or not she can remain or not. And city council did amend the planning commission bylaws to incorporate certain provisions in there that require residency of the city of Goddard unless state law requires extra to, extrajurisdictional oversight like those. The state requires two planning commissioners to reside outside of city limits but within three miles. And so we're reviewing that for Mrs. Crowe, if she can stay or not, and kind of reviewing that internally right now.
Hotel part, you're talking June or July? Or what about the, the natatorium and the pool, that whole same time, or?
No, probably separate times. The, the contractors are working on different portions of the, of the Starbond, and it's, it's difficult to make a determination of when the hotel versus the natatorium versus the Genesis portion versus the baseball diamonds are going to be done. I would assume the way it's progressing right now, that the baseball diamonds, the softball will probably be done first, then the hotel, and then the Genesis, and then the natatorium portion of it, if I had to speculate, just by the way it's progressing. And it is, obviously, there's, we're hoping for it to be expedited a little bit quickly, but weather permitting, labor shortages and supply shortages have sort of caused a slowdown. But we're, we're still excited to see that. Betty Sheets, the general manager, spoke openly and said that it should be open in July or June. So we're hoping that the hotel at least the Hampton will have its certificate of occupancy by that time to actually be allowing guests to that portion.
More word on the second hotel?
That is speculative at this point. Right now, it's, there's hopes, but nothing is definitive. So there's, I haven't seen anything. And right now, it's mostly just kind of accomplishing what we have built now and then seeing what the future could hold for the second hotel.
I have no comments. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very.